Okey dokey. We will call the committee the whole meeting of, it says in my paper, June 5th to order. And, Mr. Bryson, do you have the landing knowledge for us?
Thank you, ma'am deputy mayor. We would like to acknowledge that the city in Brew of Juneau is on Klinkit land and wish to honor the indigenous people of this land. For more than 10,000 years, the Alaska people have been and continue to be integral to the well being of our community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community and to honor the cultural traditions and resilience of the Klinkit people. Ganeshish.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Madam clerk, will you note the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, the role is so noted and Ms. Wallace is just joining us and we're waiting for Mr. Smith, but otherwise everyone is present in a quorum is established.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any changes to the agenda? No thing there. Approval of minutes, November 7th, 2022. Anyone have corrections, comments on those minutes? Okay, hearing none. Those are approved. We have one, two, three things on our agenda. City Hall, presentation from J-COS and short term rental. So let's go with City Hall, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You've got a memo in your packet with some attached information courtesy of a research project by the municipal clerks. Regarding City Hall, there are two items that I have recommended in the municipal budget that you will vote on presumably next Monday night. One is an appropriation of $10 million into the CIP. And the second is $50,000 to advocate for issuance of bonds to support such a project. I think everybody is aware that we put this on the ballot last year. It was a close vote and it failed. As I note in the memo, all the, all the issues that we talked about last year are the same. The economics have not been updated, but if we proceed, we, we will. The philosophical issues are all, all exist. The, it's not a pure economic issue, although there are economic reasons to pursue a city hall project. There is a efficiency of government argument. Having employees consolidated one location, there is a ease of public service argument for our customers, the taxpayers, when they come to do business with us. Being for them, being able to figure out where to go and how to efficiently work with us. There is the problem of renovating this building. An awkward building at best. Loveable, but awkward. What we would do and how we would phase that work and move into temporary offices. There are the problems with our lease spaces. I think everybody's aware that we're expecting a fine from OSHA on our Marineview lease space because of that building owner's failure to maintain the building. I think everybody's aware also that our lease space in the municipal way building is time limited. Eventually, the Heritage Institute will find other uses for that building or, or grow into the building is probably a better way to put that. So the question really is, are we going to try again this year? In terms of timing, I, I would advocate, yes. The reasons are good. We did, we did not, I think, put our best foot forward last year when we did not appropriate funds to advocate for the project. And I think a government facility is always a tough sell to the voters. And I think if we're going to go forward, we need to more affirmatively position ourselves to advocate on the reasons why. I think an appropriation is necessary because people will want to debate what's advocacy and what are, what are facts? And the, the prudent and safer course with counsel from our attorney to just do an appropriation and have the authorization. So you're, you, you would have a an opportunity to vote for that appropriation. There's the question of cost. I think one assembly member asked recently, could it cost less? It could, but there are lots of things in, that are not in our control. We, we really can't control the construction economy and we can't control inflation. We can't control the scope of the project. So we could in theory, build a, a facility that would be less than our needs. It's hard for me to advocate that that's a good idea. We could not build parking with the project. When we talked about that last year, the assembly considered that and decided that having a level of underground parking was important. We could try to have satellite use of Centennial Hall. We talked about whether an offsite assembly chambers was a good idea. The assembly was not persuaded last year by that. So by and large, I think the facility plan that we talked about last year, I think that is a good plan. In this memo, I note that if we pursue a different procurement method, a design build method, I think we may be able to achieve better results. Design build allows contractors to work with architects and engineers and come up with value engineering solutions rather than having a prescriptive plan set. So I would, I would advocate for that design build method. A lot of information there. Two recommendations at the end of my packet. One is forward and ordinance authorizing the issue. It's a geo bonds for 27 million. The other is forward and ordinance authorizing the manager to advocate and provide public information regarding the need for new city hall. The last comments I'll make is about the clerk's research project, which I think was interesting, enjoyable to go down memory lane. I absolutely want to push back on the public comment of we voted on this. Why are you talking about this again? Absolutely want to push back on that. Part of our job representing our citizens is to try and find best solutions and, and take it to the voters. And when the voters tell us no, it doesn't mean no forever on any variation. It means you didn't get it right that time. And my read on the ballot last year is we didn't get it right. So I think we look at it and we try to listen to the voters. And we try to respond. So I think we didn't get it right by not engaging and providing information. I think by putting $10 million more cash into the project, we can reduce the cost. And there may be other things that you would, would choose today, but we have a long history of trying to find the sweet spot of what the voters want and what they want to approve. And that's just part of our process. It's not easy to find out the will of eight or 10 or 12,000 voters at any one time and we get to do it once a year. So that's what I have. Happy to talk about this project, but I think really the question for the body is, are we going to try again this year?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And I appreciate, I had asked for the information about multiple ballots because we voted on many things, many times. So I appreciate that. Thank you to the clerk for making a more thorough memo than I even imagined. So that was really nice to refresh my memory because I knew it was multiple times, but I didn't.
And if I might, Madam Chair, all the credit goes to Deputy Clerk Andy Hirsch, who is not with us this week because she's off to clerk school, but she did a lot of fun researching that project.
Thank you. Thanks to her. So we talked about this a lot last year. What questions do you have about the new information or anything for the manager, Ms. Trum?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just a quick question on the ordinances. So there's two proposed here, but then I think you've also, we're talking about a, an appropriation for the advocacy and public information. Is that a third one or does it rolled into the second one?
Mr. Manager.
Deputy Mayor, so the, the funding for advocacy is rolled into the manager's budget. It's already there. The 10 million is already in the CIP. So in order to put something on the ballot, we necessarily need an ordinance for geo bonds and the prudent course of action on advocacy is to just specifically have an ordinance and call out that effort.
I just know that Mr. Smith has joined us. Thank you. More questions? Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you talk a little bit about the leases on the $820,000 and kind of how you came up with that and would there still be cost of that if we had a space?
Mr. Watt.
Thank you. So, so our lease costs right now are 820,000 or so. I think it's actually a little bit more than that. And if you wanted to look at the whole economic picture, you need to look at also the cost of maintaining this building. I don't have that off the top of my head. When we did the financial analysis last year, we can, we can pull that forward. You know, when I think the question is, okay, what happens if you have a new building in terms of cost? So on a new building, we'll have building maintenance on that cost. We would have debt issuance for the construction of that building. We'll have utilities, we'll have heat. So it's really kind of up, down in different categories. So yes, if we had a new facility, we would reduce 820 or so in lease costs. But then we would have other costs that would increase. We would have presumably this building we would dispose of. So we'd probably get some revenue activity for that. On the plus side, we would lose the maintenance cost of this building. So compared to many of our buildings, this is a relatively expensive building to maintain. We would have a higher quality building that I think on a square footage basis would be more energy efficient. So there's, there's a lot of ups and downs on the economics. And I just would say it's not a pure economic argument. There's the efficiency of government and ease of interaction for the public and a higher and better use of this building, I think, are some of the other reasons why I think this makes sense.
Follow up, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Not a follow up, different question. So in the Marineview, we're going to get OSHA five. Can you tell, can you guess how many times we've had to send employees home because we didn't have water there?
Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know how many times we've sent people home. I do know that it feels like a near weekly occurrence where water has turned, been turned off abruptly in that building. So from a, you know, from a workplace standpoint, OSHA is going to do what they're going to do. They verbally let us know that we would get fined and the building owner would get fined from like just a general professionalism standpoint, I think that building has fallen below the bar repeatedly and regularly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Sorry for my tardiness. And apologies, especially if this has already been discussed before, but at a previous meeting, I asked the question, does it need to cost $40 million? So it, and he said, yes, it needs to cost $40 million.
Here, he actually addressed that, but why don't you give him a brief go around?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Assembly Mayor Smith, I, I, I think your question was something exactly like that. Does it need to cost this much? Or I think better. You said, could it cost less? Right? And it could. And so just before you walked in the room, I talked about things in and out of our control. So the competitiveness in construction pricing is totally out of our control. Inflation totally out of control, supply chain totally out of our control. And I think as a municipality, you know, sometimes we get the, the benefit of good timing on those and sometimes we don't and, and rarely if ever and probably never are we going to be able to specifically target the best time possible to do capital improvements. In our control are things like size of the facility. So we could choose a smaller facility that doesn't host all of our programs. We could choose to not include the underground parking. I think that was a large additive decision that we made last year and you could go either way on that. We also talked about whether using Centennial Hall as assembly chambers or reducing the scope of the building. So those are the three scope things. So generally on capital projects, it's scope, schedule and budget. So you can reduce your scope. You can, you can make your schedule longer, which sometimes is appealing and sometimes is not appealing. And the last thing that I will put out there is the procurement method. And I think on this type of facility, design built procurement method is more likely to get us better cost. So traditional municipal improvements, we, we have done the kind of segmented design, build, build, right? Figure out exactly what you want, go bid, build it as you go along the way and your, in your low bid process, take your lumps on how that goes in design. Builds, one of the reasons that many portions of the industry moved there is to control cost and give responsibility onto your general contractor. In this case, at the end of the day, we just want class B office spaces. It's not something that has to be fancy. It's not something that can't be detailed at a high enough level. So I think a design build process also can help us control costs. So really procurement method and scope of the project are probably your two best things to think about on can it cost less? And then I guess the last thing is, can it cost less to the voters in terms of property tax? So by adding 10 million into the, the budget, we can reduce the anticipated costs on the property tax base.
Mr. Bryson has a question and then I missed Madam Mayor. Do you have another one, Mr.? Go ahead. No, go ahead.
So Mr. Watt, I, and you, and you included some of those things in your memo, but it's, I just, just to understand, like, I mean, we have sustainability standards and efficiency and things that we need to achieve. So we, you, I guess we can only, we can only cut so many corners. And I guess just, just so I know, like, it's not like we chose for this $40 million. I mean, is it like the highest level finish is possible or is it, is it, is this kind of a reasonable cost per square foot? And it's when you want this many square feet and underground parking and onsite chambers. And anyway, I guess just reassure me that, I mean, this is just a, this is like a, we have a lifetime facility. I mean, we have a facility and an organization that has a lifetime, hopefully, time horizon, but we should have, you know, finishes and things that are appropriate, but not excessive.
Thank, thank you. So, so we have not actually detailed levels of finishes, but that would not, not be the intent. I've talked to a lot of people in the construction industry, contractors, building owners that are building commercial buildings right now. And pricing is just high. Labor is high, commodities are high, supply chain is high, fuel is high. The ability to lock in prices far into the future is limited. I honestly, when I look at the cost estimate, I think it's high, but that's what the professional cost estimators gave us last year. I've adjusted the numbers for this year. I think we're also not, and we don't want to be in the business of selling blue sky to the voters. So when I saw the cost estimate last year, I thought surely, surely this is not going to cost that much per square foot. But, you know, in the cost estimator's defense, very, very difficult to predict what a project is going to cost in a year from now or two years from now, or whenever, whenever it gets built. The, the reason that I would advocate strongly for a design build method is we don't, we don't care about the specification in the way that, you know, maybe you do on the statewide museum. So the APK building or maybe we don't care so much about process equipment like you might in a wastewater treatment plant or, or other facilities where you deeply care about the, the quality of the finishes or the look of the building. I, I mean, I think our goal is a lean, mean, class B office building that has durable materials, won't cost a lot to maintain and has flexible space. And so I think in, in the end, we had a, a cost estimate from a professional cost estimator last year. And I'm proposing just to update that less than 10 million for some inflation, but not as high as construction inflation has, has run to get to the 27 million.
Okay, Mr. Bryson and then Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am Deputy Mayor. So Mr. Watt, I was roughly remembering that this was about a $40 million project and that parking was roughly, to do underground parking was roughly 10% of that total. 3.8, 3.9 million was what it added to the cost. Is that the same recollection roughly? So, Mr. Watt nodded, yes. So is there any other reduction that we could do that would remove 10% off of the cost that could shave $4 million off? You're talking about like moving the assembly chambers out or making a facility that was smaller than what was required? Would any of those changes even come close to that? I mean, other than you just really shrink in the size of the building? Would any of those changes come close to a $4 million difference in the project or is only removing parking going to be something that substantial that knocks 10% off? That could really like change the number that we ask the, the voters to vote for?
Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. That, I, I think parking is the largest thing. I mean, you could always, you could always find a way to cut 1,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet. But my assessment is at the end of the day, then we would be renting office space from somewhere else. So probably we would keep maybe a lot of apartments in the Sea Alaska building and then the lawyers would be separated from the rest of the workforce. And I don't know that that would be good for harmony and interaction and communication. I think parking is probably the one easiest thing. Director Kester and I really noodled on the assembly chambers in Centennial Hall last year. We, we thought it was a decent idea. Nobody else did. I mean, we talked to a number of people and nobody, well, very few people were enthusiastic about that. And I think, I think from a, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, what we're doing today. Here, staff comes into the offices. The public knows that when they want to interact with the city to get their parking pass or pay their sales tax or come to the assembly meeting, you come to the one place. So I think from a public use standpoint, you know, do it right, do it once, use it for 100 years.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
Follow up. When would be an appropriate time? Should we get it where the ordinance is making its way to the, to be in a bond issue? When would be the appropriate time for me to make like an amendment to try and convince the rest of the assembly to remove parking from this project? How would you see that process going to get to, what are we going to ask the voters for? I would want to, when do I remove things or try to remove things before we make it an official ballot?
Mr. Manager, we.
So Deputy Mayor, tonight would be a really good night to do that. So when, so, so a couple of things. One is in order to put something on the municipal ballot, we need to introduce no later, I'm looking at the clerk, then July 12th.
10th.
10th, July 10th.
June 12th meeting, July 10th and July 31st are the only three meetings that those things have to happen.
That's right. So, so what I am saying tonight, if you, if you're looking at packet page 12 and I say forward an ordinance for 27 million, we would introduce that next Monday night, the 12th. And you, and presumably you would adopt that on July 10th. That is one meeting faster scheduled than necessary. We could have more meetings on this. We could introduce a different ordinance, a different dollar amount on July 10th and have public hearing on July 31st as well. I'm recommending you just decide tonight. Once we, once we publicly notice an ordinance, you know, we have to tell the public the maximum amount that we are contemplating. So we're going to put a title out there and the title is, you know, not to exceed 27 million. So if we're going to introduce it on Monday and then we're going to later reduce that number, it would behoove us to reintroduce it so that the voters are advised of the true maximum financial exposure they might face. I hope that answers your question.
That answered it perfectly, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Bryson, we're going to have motions tonight, so we can.
Perfect.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe I just want to drag Mr. Rogers over here, but I was just seeing what this would do to our debt service.
Mr. Rogers, come and talk to us about debt service.
Living in a time with Mr. Rogers.
Yeah, we want to make you say stuff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have the packet for Wednesday night pulled up, but I can pull it up and we can look at it in specific or we could talk about it on Wednesday night. I think one of the things that's interesting about, I'll just give you two little highlights that we'll talk about more on Wednesday night in terms of bond capacity. One, our analysis of bond capacity today is that CBJ could, could bond for something on the order of almost $50 million in the next two years without it affecting the debt service mill rate. Meaning there is enough existing headroom in the debt service mill rate for what my memo on Wednesday night says is $48 million. So $48 million is the amount of debt capacity we have without increasing the mill rate. Conveniently, you can think about debt in this particular moment. $10 million of debt issued for 25 years at 4% costs about a tenth of a mil in the first year. Interestingly, it will cost a lot less than a tenth of a mil 25 years from now. So you can think about it in those terms, but so you know, with the mill rate forecast to fall from, from the debts or just the debts or proportion of the rate forecast to fall from 1.2 to 0.73 in FY25, if we don't take on any new debt and we don't accelerate any other debt payment, $10 million of new debt issued for 25 years at 4% soaks up 1/10 of 1 mil. So getting from 0.73 to 0.12 is essentially 5/10ths of mills to get to about $50 million, just under $50 million. So if it just like tiny takeaways, $48 million of capacity without raising the debt service mill rate inside the headroom that you have every $10 million of debt, 25 years, 4% interest would cost you about 1/10 of 1 mil. And you have 5/10 of 1 mil roughly, 0.47/10 of 1 mil as headroom to absorb debt without anybody paying a mill rate that's higher than today's.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I see. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the question. We'll talk, is that enough for now? We'll talk more about this on Wednesday. Ms. Hale had her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I know we'll be able to talk about this when we debate proposals to modify the, the ordinance tonight, but I, I just want to advocate for the underground parking and I think it would be a terrible loss if we lost that. We'd be building a building and not putting underground parking under it, which means we are wasting, continue to waste precious real estate. So we have precious real estate over there.
Do you have a question? Because we'll do this at the motioning.
You don't want to hear me now?
Okay, we'll do it if he makes a motion about the parking. How's that? Looks like we're ready for a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and the principal amount not to exceed 27 million to finance construction and re-crepting of a new city hall for the city in and re-crepting of a new city hall for the city in Burrow and submitting a purpose proposition to the voters at the election to be held on October 3rd, 2023.
Is there objection to that motion, Mr. Bryson?
Object for the purpose of an amendment.
Go for it.
My amendment would reduce the amount to $23 million. I would reduce the funding by $4 million, which is roughly the loss of the parking. And while I agree with Ms. Hale, parking is super critical for downtown. Every parking space is a sales transaction. It's it's that important. However, I do believe that listening to the the voters last year, bringing them back something and hoping that we can just, we we put a little bit more money into it and that can be a good enough answer. I strongly believe that it would, it's important for us to remove the parking and show that we could reduce the scope of the building. This is the most impacting way to reduce the scope of the building without impacting the ability for city to have all the functions under one roof. Nothing else shaves $4 million off the project. By taking one action, we now bring the project, asking the voters to support $23 million is going to be a heck of a lot easier than asking the voters to support 27 or $35 million as we did last year. The difference is, if we hold out for parking, we jeopardize not getting the building. If we show that we've shaved off the parking and we've reduced the scope of the building and we've put more money to it and we've brought the cost of financing closer to the amount of rent that we are paying, we are making the arguments for this new city hall. So thank you for considering that.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Ms. Hale wants to speak and then Ms. Ms. Tree.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Bryson. I I appreciate your insights and I appreciate that you talked to a lot of people last year about this issue. And I I understand where you're coming from, wanting to reduce the cost. I think we have actually done an effective job by putting that $10 million for this project in the budget of reducing the cost. I'll again just speak to what I was speaking to, which is that's precious real estate. We have a bunch of flat land over there where the city hall is going to go and it is used for parking. There's this rare thing in our city, which is flat land and we park a whole bunch of cars there. And whatever we can do to move away from that, I really believe we need to do. And we just don't have the opportunity to build a building and put parking under it very often. Thanks.
Ms. Tree. And then Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm pretty torn on this one and I want to say I really commend Mr. Bryson for taking the results of the election last year and and working to modify this proposal and kind of taking that feedback to heart. And I think he has done a great job on that. I do agree with the reasons that Ms. Hale has said for keeping the underground parking. And I also think that because this is a feature that we're talking about, that really it has to go in at the beginning. It can't ever be added afterwards. I I do think I want to keep that in there in the plans for this building. You know, we are hoping to be in business for perpetuity. So I think this is something that we should do right the first time. And underground parking really would be the best thing to have in New City Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Tree. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I guess a question for the manager and that's just, how many, remind me of how many parking spots would go under the building? And then if the parking isn't underground, where does it go?
Mr. Watt? He's calling for a lifeline.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So so, oh, Director Kester has one, a microphone back there. Let's-
Go ahead. Ms. Ms. Kester.
Thank you. I believe it's 38 parking spots would go underground. So there would be a need for, let's just say, there will be demand for additional parking and we have done a study of the area. And there's a tremendous amount of parking, available surface parking available in that area. There's also the North State Office Building Parking Garage. And I and I have a really nice report on that that I can pull up while you guys are debating.
Ms. Kester, the last part of your sentence, I got garbled. You have a good report on what was that sentence?
Yeah, so we have, CDD did a report on the available surface parking in that, in the Aqua Village District. And there's a lot of parking, surface parking available. Now, some of it's leased to the state, some of it's used by Centennial Hall. So there's, there's different uses for different parking spaces. We would lose parking by building on that site because it is existing surface parking. So I am happy to to pull that up so I can noodle it. I also was just going to mention that the North State Office Building Parking Garage is a project that CBJ Engineering is actively working with the state of Alaska on.
Thank you, Ms. Kester. Madam Mayor?
I have a question along the similar lines. How many parking spaces would we lose by building the building there?
It's Ms. Kester. You're going to look it up? Is that what's happening? She's going to look that up. More questions or comments on the motion? We're on the motion. We're on the amendment. Yeah, we're on the amendment to the motion. Mr. Bryson's amendment. Ms. Hughes-Scandies, you have a comment?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, just a brief one. I think, yeah, I can appreciate where both sides are coming from. I will say that I think the difference of 4 million would not be a make it or break it change to this overall dollar amount. And really, it's on the city to sell why we need this. And I don't think $4, $4 million is going to change someone's mind. It's more going to be on whether we can convince them successfully that this is the right reason because our business model is forever. So for that reason, I'm going to object.
Comment? Any other comments on the motion? Mr. Smith?
That wasn't me. I guess I'll just comment a little bit now while we're maybe waiting on, waiting for something. Anyway, when this came out originally, when this was proposed last year, I've I voted against putting on the budget just due to timing. We were emerging from the pandemic, questions on location and I I'm feeling, again, and I kind of, I guess I want to kind of piggyback on what Ms. Hughes-Scandies said in that I think the reasons for the voters voting it down were not just, we don't want a new city hall or we don't, you know, we, I I think the reason people vote no are are varied. So I I kind of agree with Ms. Hughes-Scandies on that $4 million isn't, I I don't think going to probably be that material of a difference on the on the ballot. I guess I, I'm not, I'm hoping that sure, there may be some parking there now. I'm also hoping for future development in that area so that having underground parking will allow us to again, use that centrally located flat space for housing or other community needs. And then, you know, similar to kind of what happened at the Plaza at Sea Alaska, you know, now, now that space, that surface space is being used considerably better than for parking cars. So I I do appreciate the the willingness to look at, you know, ways to, ways to reduce the cost of the project. And this is a big one. I I don't know if I'm going to support removing the the underground parking, however.
Okay, so that's a comment on the motion. There are no more. I'll make a brief one. I would speak against this. Speak against the amendment. I was one of the people who didn't think it should be on the ballot last year. It's a different year and we have more information, information from commercial real estate people who say there really isn't space for us to move to. Thank you. Did I, was mine too loud or something? I should talk more quietly. Anyway, so I think it's a building that we're going to use for a long time and it needs parking. There's $4 million is a lot of money for 38 spaces, I'd say. But that's what they cost. And we need parking for a city hall. Okay, we're going to vote on the motion, on the amendment, which is to remove $4 million from the amount and remove the parking, the underground parking. Madam Clerk, when you are get there, you could call us the roll.
Ms. Gladyshevsky.
Yep, Mr. Smith.
May I ask a process question? If for, after seeing a report and getting more information and determining that actually I don't think we need underground parking. I mean, we could amend that, we could, we could reduce the motion amount either at introduction or at public hearing.
That's correct. It's less than 27 million, not more. So we could do it at, and if we take public testimony, which is the point of introducing something. Madam Mayor?
Just point of clarification, once it has $27 million, you can't change the 27 million, but it's going to say up to. So we'd have to just tell the voters we weren't spending it all. But once the 27 is locked in.
Ms. Lane, when we introduce an ordinance next, if this passes, it would say up to 27 million. People testify and at the hearing where we pass it, can we write up to 25 million? Just to clarify this point, because there's a little fuzzy on it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's a great question. Yeah, can we take a one minute ease? I just want to look it up.
You bet. Yep, one minute at ease or until Ms. Lane raises her hand. Ms. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at, we just took a moment to look and see what we did last year. And it looks like we introduced two different motions with two different amounts. So you could potentially do that. Or you could, if you have enough votes, change the amount at the public hearing, but then you'll need to reintroduce it. Because once you change the title, it will need to be reintroduced.
Okay, great. That's, thank you for clarifying that. That's good to know. I forgot we did that two things last time. Okay, ready for the vote on the motion, Madam Clerk? On the amendment, I give, Mr. Bryson's amendment.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So for the amendment to reduce the amount by $4 million so that the amount in the motion, if amended, is $23 million. Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
No.
Ms. Hughes-Scandies?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Tree?
No.
Ms. Wall?
No.
Well, you don't.
No.
Ms. Gladyshevsky?
No.
And Mayor Weldon?
No.
Motion fails. One, I, seven, eight nays.
Go back to the main motion. Is there objection to the main motion? All right, hearing no objection, that has passed. Madam Mayor?
Okay, I move an ordinance authorizing the man to advocate and provide public information regarding the need for a new city hall, including this dissemination of information that may influence the outcome of the future ballot initiative and ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection to that motion? Hearing none, that has also passed. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Watt and everybody who worked on this. Now we're to presentation from the Juno Commission on Sustainability and the Chair of the Commission and the Chair of the Energy Subcommittee. And if you would identify yourselves for the record, you, and everybody has their presentation in the packet and we're going to pull up the presentation. I have no idea. Okay, so, thank you for coming and you want to take questions in the middle of your presentation? Is that, or how do you want to do that? Just want to? Press, press a little button. There you go.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I I think what we thought might work is as we go through each sections, we're going to tag team going back and forth on on different sections of this and we would pause and see if there were questions.
Okay, great. Sounds great. And as part of the impetus for this is there is a new greenhouse gas inventory and hear about that and what's happening with the energy issues in our city. So go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor and Assembly Members. My name is Gretchen Kaiser and I'm Chair of the Juno Commission on Sustainability, which we affectionately call J-COS. With me here tonight is Steve Banky, who is the J-COS Energy Committee Chair. Which one am I pushing? Have that. Oh, okay. Get the technical issues out of the way. So what we would like to do tonight is give you an overview in four parts, looking at the history of Juno's climate action and a little bit on the global context. And then I'll present that and then Steve will look into, explain some of the highlights as the Deputy Mayor mentioned of the current energy and greenhouse gas inventory analysis that is just being completed. Then back to me to explain some of what we've been doing as a community. Where are we? And then Steve will handle what's next and some J-COS recommendations. And then I have a few concluding comments. So the forecast for, long-term forecast for Juno is warmer and wetter weather. And here's a couple of examples that we're familiar with. There's a series of slides here. I'm going to briefly talk about this one and then fast forward to the final one and and go through the history a bit. Juno was established in 2007. So that's the beginning of the time series here. On the vertical axis, you have the atmosphere, atmospheric level of CO2 in parts per million. And that's a measure of the heat trapping gases in the earth's atmosphere. And on the horizontal axis, you have a series, time series, 2007 to the present. One note on the, the starting point here we have in 2007 is 381 parts per million CO2. Just as a reference, 350 is considered safe in in that any level above that we're trapping heat and we're running into problems as a global- and we're running into problems as a global situation. So at this point, if you look, move forward in your packet to page 29, I'll just capture a little bit of this history. Can we get rid of that? Oops, I went too far. How do we get rid of this thing?
There we go.
Oh, no, I know they don't, but it's, okay. That's good. That's good. So as I mentioned, in 2007, J-COS was established by resolution. Our primary function is advisory to the Assembly. And on an annual basis, we align our work to the Assembly's annual goals. Sustainability, broadly speaking, is a community's resilience and its longevity. J-COS itself is focused on energy. We have a solid waste committee, and then we also undertake community outreach. We work with city staff organizations in the community, conduct background research and public education. If you look at this graph and the sort of the timeline here, in 2007, we, the community had its first energy greenhouse gas emissions study. 2010, the second study was conducted. 2011, the Juno Climate Action and Implementation Plan was put in place. And looking globally, 2015, the Paris Climate Agreement, the first international treaty on climate action was established. In 2017, the Assembly affirmed the community's commitment to climate action. And in 18, the Juno Renewable Energy Strategy was put in, was adopted with a goal of 80% of our energy use being renewable. Of course, it's our hydroelectric power by 2045, which is 22 years from now. And in 2021, looking at nationally, the U.S. set a higher, a new goal, 50% reduction in greenhouse gases. By 2030, reflecting international scientists' studies showing the climate urgency. In 2021, the federal government also passed legislation creating a, what some people have referred to as a fire hose of federal monies directed largely towards local governments on climate action. And then here we are, oh, I skipped 19, pardon me. An important step. If that, in that year and your annual goal setting, the Assembly's established a new care category on sustainable community and has had that in place for the last four years. And finally, today, we have the third energy and greenhouse gas emissions study that you, the 2021 was the most current data we could get. So before I hand this off to Steve, are there any questions that this kind of?
Any questions on the history so far? I think we're good.
Okay. Thank you.
Last year, the CBJ contracted to update the analysis of Juno's carbon footprint. We call the greenhouse gas emission inventory. There's a draft of this report that's for public review until June 16th. This graph shows the bottom line good news that our carbon pollution in 2021 was 28% lower than in 2010, putting us in line with our 2010 targets. But you'll see that on the graph here, there's also a big question mark. And that's that we really don't know what happened between 2010 and 2021. Those are a couple of points in time. And we do know that there was a significant hit to the economy in 2020 and 2021. Basically, a very minimal tourism year in 2021 when we did this analysis. And so we think that that probably reflected in a decrease in transportation, especially transportation-related emissions. So we don't really know whether that line was kind of a smooth line, whether it was, went across and then dropped suddenly in 2021, or whether it went up and down over that decade. And thank you. And, and I'm just going to, there's a whole bunch of data in this report, much too much to go over this evening. We have had a couple of J-COS sessions over the last couple of months where we've reviewed this data with the consultants. I've had a couple of public, at least one public event on the, on the report. But I'm just going to point out a couple of highlights in this, in this information. This shows community-wide energy use. So on the left side, it shows that buildings are the major user of energy in Juno. Transportation was, was about 42% of the energy used. Transportation is the second largest category, 34% of energy use. The mines are pretty significant, adding up to about 19% of the total energy use. The graph on the right shows sources of energy. And two big categories there are the electricity that it shows there in the, in blue, 20, is 27%. And that's largely renewable energy from our clean hydropower. The rest of it, the rest of the energy used by the community comes from fossil fuels. So the remaining 73%. This, this graph shows how that energy use converts into greenhouse gas emissions. And there are things kind of reversed because transportation is the, is the largest emitter with 47% and buildings 25%. And that's largely because transportation is largely, almost completely fossil fuel dependent. Whereas buildings, you can make use of that nice clean hydropower to heat them and power them. The, there's a whole bunch of details we get into here. I'm going to note one thing that's not included on here, which is cruise ship emissions are not reflected in this analysis. The way that these community greenhouse gas emission inventories are done is they use the place where users fuel their equipment and account for their emissions at the, the places where the fueling occurs. So, so we haven't included anything to do with cruise ships in this analysis. But we do know that cruise ships, when they're docked or when they're hotel in the port of Juno, pre-2019, at least, we don't know what happened in the last couple of years. Basically, produced about 24,000 tons of carbon emissions annually, which is about 8% of the total greenhouse gas emissions in Juno. So that doesn't say anything about the fuel that they use to get back and forth up the West Coast. It just refers to the emissions that result when they're parked in Juno, running their, running their generators for, for power. Thank you. The, the next couple of charts show changes in energy use over the three, between the three different years. So it shows the differences between the three different years for buildings, equipment, transportation, et cetera. As I mentioned, we're not sure of all the reasons for these differences. In, in some cases, we understand them. For example, the, the mines, big change in the, for the Greens Creek Mine was in about 2009 or so, they switched over to hydropower, got connected to the grid. And so their emissions and their energy use shifted significantly. And the Kensington got going. It wasn't, it wasn't really operating until started half year in 2010. So its energy use has, has gone up over that time.
Can you, can you tell me what the axis, 35? What are the numbers on the? Is that greenhouse gas emissions? I don't know what the measure is on the, on the, on the Y-axis.
The, this is actually, this is energy use on the
So that's BTUs?
On the axis, that's BTUs, yeah. Or millions of, millions of BTUs, guess is what it is.
So, sorry, can I just ask about the, if it's BTUs, Greens Creek is still using BTUs, but they're using hydro BTUs instead of?
Yes.
So I don't get why.
And I'm just looking at that and, and I'm confused by it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So, so this is energy use. It, they, it shows quite a decline in energy use. But they kept using energy. They just shifted to electricity. So, so I'm going to have to take that one under advisement.
Okay. Maybe it's emissions, but anyway.
Yeah, unless I actually accidentally put emissions in here, but I don't think so. Because the next, the next table then focuses on, that's all right. It's a, it's a good question. I'm glad somebody's paying attention there. The, the, the changes in the sources. So on the left side is heating oil, which shows a fairly significant difference, reduction over time. Electricity use goes up over time, which is kind of what you would expect as, as some of the, as some of the uses convert to electricity. But on the right-hand side, the, the transportation-related columns, we really don't understand what's going on with some of those. Some of them may be related to the COVID emergency in, in 2021. There would have been less, particularly less local air traffic, helicopter, flight seeing, et cetera. That may be reflected in that drop. But also, the fuel purchasing policies of different companies, they're using boats and aircraft have shifted over, over time. And we're not quite sure of, of, of the factor, of how that plays into it. So in closing, and I hesitate to say that a little bit because everybody says that when you deal with data like this, we need additional data. And we think that we really do need another year or two years worth of data like this to be able to sort out some of what's been, when happening in terms of trends. And my understanding is that to see that you folks funded the, the initial funding for this analysis provides enough funding for another year's worth of, of analysis. So in closing, any, any questions?
Questions on this part, Ms. Hale?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and thanks so much for the presentation. So I'm just looking at that heating fuel, heating oil, that would not have been impacted by COVID. And do you believe that that drop from the blue to the yellow might be related to installation of heat pumps? Or why do you think that dropped?
I actually skipped something that I intended to say when we started this out, which is there's two, two big caveats about this. One, we don't understand some of the reasons for the trends. Secondly, we did, there, there were differences in the methodologies between 2007 and 2010 and 2021. We didn't have access to fuel sales data in 2021. We've tried for the past five, six, seven years to get fuel data from the suppliers, from the fuel suppliers in town. We had that data in 2007 and 2010. They're not interested in voluntarily giving up that information anymore. So we had to base this on, on modeling of the different uses. We think that it's, it's, it's as accurate as most communities around the country are in the same situation. So we think that it's good information, but we don't totally understand what differences that might have made on top of the differences in the economic changes. But to answer your question, we do have a fair amount of evidence that, that heating oil and, and heating uses are switching to electricity, either direct heat for electricity or to, to heat pumps. And that's just the fact, we know that over the past five years, there's been at least 2,000 heat pumps installed in the community. And that's, I mean, that's almost, that's getting close to 20% of the, the heating systems in town. So it's bound to make, make a difference.
Ms. Hugh Skandies?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I was curious when I was looking at this last night about what degree you might consider COVID having played in it and the lack of transportation related to lack of cruise ship tourism. So given your great little graph that maybe it did this and then went down, or maybe it did this, and we just don't know, how much confidence do you have if we did this in three years or something where we would get enough evidence of the transportation sector picking back up? Do we feel confident knowing that there are other things like heat pumps that we wouldn't be sort of back more at a straight line? Or could you just speak to that a little bit?
Mr. Banky?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't think I can speculate too much about that. I think that the, I think we need to understand better what impacts the, the transportation fuel usage. And again, it, it partly is going to be economy and partly going to be these policies. And that's something we really haven't looked at in terms of where planes are fueled and, you know, and, and the same, and some boat. And that's true for some of the marine transportation. And then just looking at this, we don't really understand why there was such a big difference between 2007 and 2010, for that matter. And those, there were dramatic changes in those three years and a couple of categories. Bigger changes than there were between, in the 10 years over that. So, so the, another year's data would give us some clues. And also, I think that we would, now that we kind of have this bigger picture, I think we would be asking some more questions about why, you know, why some of these changes have occurred.
The, the heating oil one, for example, I know that there were, it was actual gallons for the 2007 one. But for the 2010 one, wasn't that modeled as well? I don't think you had actual gallons in 2010. I'm not sure. I think, that's what I think. Is that correct?
No, 2010, there was actual.
Actual gallon, they gave us, the companies gave us data in seven and 10?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but one question about that is you really need to have, in, in 2007 and 2010, they didn't really do some of the modeling that they could have to understand how some of these fuels were used. So all they had was sales for gasoline and the sales for diesel and the sales for heating oil. But they, for example, they actually recommended in 2010 that you look at modeling vehicle use, which is something that we did in 2021. So you really need to combine good modeling with field data ideally. But in the absence of field sales data, this is kind of the best, this is the best we're going to have.
And as you point out, most communities don't have actual gallons. I mean, we're just in a, we're an island. We could go to the fuel distributors and ask them if they give it. It's just not true. And basically, any. It's just not true in basically anywhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And also, I just wanted to point out, buried the lead a little bit, in, in two thousand and eleven, Juno Climate Action and Implementation Plan said the goal was to reduce greenhouse gases by twenty twenty-five percent in, by twenty thirty-two, and according to the, your graph, we already did that. We need to, um, make a new goal.
Well, that's, that's, we're, we're gonna talk, we're gonna talk about that in our recommendations.
Okay.
I, I, but, but I will point out that you actually kind of have two goals because you have the renewable energy strategy goal of eighty percent by twenty forty-five. So anyway, yeah, we'll talk some more about that.
Thank you. More questions? Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, one thing that, um, I appreciate all the caveats around the trends, but it makes me think that the, the pie graphs are even kind of more interesting because those are about percentages of what's, you know, what's happening right now and speak to kind of what we can influence. What are the biggest, you know, places to influence? I was really surprised by kind of transportation, the, the emissions, um, graph, transportation is pretty evenly split. It's a big part of the pie and it's pretty evenly split between marine transportation, highway transportation and air transportation. And I would expect air transport to be high. I, I know there's a lot of cars driving around, so I guess that makes sense. Marine transportation, where is most of that? Is that just collectively, we have a lot of boats that are very inefficient, or how does that weigh against?
Yeah.
Mr. Banking.
The, the marine transportation was a little complicated because the rules of trying to calculate these community, you know, estimations is fuel that's, you know, purchased and used in a, inside, in the, in the community boundaries. So this was a combination of things. We looked at boat, at, at numbers of boats, boat traffic. There's actually some good data from our friends over at the Marine Exchange. You can find all kinds of data about how many hours different boats are spending in Juno waters, et cetera. So, so it's, so it's a combination of, um, yeah, the, the trend, the, the tourism-related traffic, boat traffic, those eighty whale-watching boats that burn hundreds of gallons an hour of fuel, um, uh, small cruise ships that fuel, would be fueling here, um, and, uh, and then just the regular job fishing boats, et cetera. Yeah, but, but we do have, that probably is the area where we do have the biggest questions about, be- because it is, again, based on a bunch of models of, of, uh, of, of boats and boat traffic.
So is it, it's fuel for boats purchased in Juno? So does include the ferry, for example, ferries if they refuel here?
That's one that would depend, because sometimes they fuel here and sometimes they don't. So that, yeah, we had to make some assumptions about that.
Okay, thanks. More questions on this part? Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
That's wrong.
This is really, I feel like an idiot here.
It's up or down. Which way is, he's got the touch.
I, anywhere?
Just keep going forward.
Keep going.
There you go.
Wow. Magic. So in this next section, um, I'm gonna talk about, uh, where are we now? Or what, what have we been doing in recent years? And this slide just captures, uh, the four ways you can reduce energy and greenhouse gas emissions. There's many ways we can take action as individuals, households, building owners, businesses, and some are community-scale actions for local government. Uh, the next several slides are show that, uh, a lot has been happening in Juno. And in a couple places, we'll, we'll point out some challenges now if I can get it to. All right. So how is CBJ itself addressing its own energy use? And I'll just note on, on a few of these slides, we've included as background, uh, some of your current assembly goals that, uh, speak to the issue. There, but there has been a concerted effort on upgrades to, uh, the energy efficiency in city facilities. And, uh, capital transit since two thousand and seventeen has had huge success in securing substantial federal FTA grants for, uh, bus charging electric buses. If you look at, uh, what all the city has been doing, I thought it might be helpful to offer you, uh, staff's own estimates of their energy-related work. And I apologize that we had a glitch in the final, uh, throes of putting this together. For engineering and public works, it's just over, uh, one, uh, FTE. So for these, these individuals, these are your staff professionals working on this day-to-day. It's roughly, uh, two-plus FTEs of effort. And certainly, there's others. I know, uh, the city manager has been dragged into some of these issues on occasion. So this picture, it's a picture's worth a thousand words. There's the old way of heating and the new way to heat a home in Juno. And by the way, you can save money with the new way. In the housing, uh, area, in the building area, um, as Steve mentioned, we have, uh, an estimate of about two thousand homes in Juno now have, uh, heat pumps, either partial or full heating of their home. In the rental housing, and I'm including multifamily and, uh, more broadly in that, it remains a challenge to address the, uh, larger upfront cost to, uh, convert, uh, a number of units. You're working with condominium associations or commercial building owners, and there really is a need for collaboration on financing mechanisms. So Juno can capture some of this, um, uh, federal monies that, that is available. In the marketplace, you're seeing new construction and real estate sales favoring heat pumps. Local jobs, there's a high demand for heat pumps and that contributes to hiring by, uh, local installers. And then where are we on transportation? Estimate of seven hundred EVs in the community at this point. And, uh, there's a number of actions underway by individuals, businesses and, and the city uh, in terms of public chargers. And A E L P has a couple favorable, uh, EV charging rates. However, we still have challenges. Uh, and again, it, it goes to making EV charging access, accessible in the multifamily housing in this town. And then finally, you have, uh, e- engineering and public works are now in the process of applying for a large grant, five million dollar grant from, uh, the federal, uh, DOT that would substantially increase charging infrastructure in, in Juno. And, uh, continuing on edge, uh, transportation, you have a couple transit examples. The city has, uh, s- seven Gillig electric buses on order, likely in service by two thousand and twenty-five, and a study of an electric bus circulator downtown with anticipated, uh, completion this fall. And of course, uh, the, uh, support for electric transformers or electrification of the cruise ship docks. And there's another category, uh, that actually, going back to one of, of Steve's pie charts in the greenhouse gas emissions, there was a little sliver that was referred to waste. I think it was about four percent. That's methane gas release from the landfill due to, um, the decomposition of organic waste. We do have a business in Juno has, uh, diverted one point four million pounds of organics to date. And, uh, other effort here is that the city is working on a municipal-scale composting facility. Some money in hand, also applying for another two EPA grants to augment the funding and conduct some public ed- education on food waste. And then, uh, there's also a tension to a site, uh, city land. I believe it's a played-out gravel, um, pit behind Costco to establish a zero-waste subdivision, and staff will be doing some work on that this next year. So that's kind of a, a quick overview of what's going on. Are there any questions before I hand this back to Steve?
Anybody around that section? Okay, keep going.
Okay, great.
With that summary, I was just gonna touch on a couple of, uh, possibilities for what's next, some J-COS suggestions that will be working to refine and bring back to you folks. And, uh, and, and some of these things are ongoing, uh, programs that actually Gretchen has already mentioned some of them. But the, uh, the, the first I already mentioned is to update the green, the energy and greenhouse gas emissions analysis. Ideally, it would be a couple of years worth of data to be able to give us a better fix on what these, what really are trends and what really affects these, these, uh, uh, changes in, in emission, energy use and emissions. Uh, the, the second action is to, and this is something that J-COS will continue to work on and trying to help incorporate climate energy prior, priorities into the CIP and the budget. Then the, the next four actions that I, that we've identified here basically relate to transportation. It's the biggest emitter of, of emissions, it, the biggest emitter of greenhouse gases. It's also the most difficult to do something about because, uh, uh, new electric vehicles are expensive, um, not much of a selection. We've got all these marine uses, so the, so the transportation sector is really the biggest challenge in a lot of ways. Um, and some of the kinds of actions that you, you are already taking a number of actions, supporting community transit. Anything you can do to get people out of cars and into buses contributes to, uh, reduction of emissions. Bike and pedestrian improvements does the same, expanding the public EV charging network and, uh, kind of a separate category of dock electrification, um, as well. Thank you. Uh, back to the one back.
Thanks.
Yeah. And then, and then, uh, and then there's three action areas related to buildings. Um, again, it's the second largest sector of emissions. Um, there's the potential for both emission reductions and cost savings in many of these measures. Um, incorporating energy efficiency into affordable housing. Uh, partnering with programs like Alaska Heat Smarts, Clinton Hydro Regional Housing, other weatherization and state programs. Um, and then leading by example on CBJ building performance. There's ongoing energy efficiency improvements that Gretchen ma- mentioned. And then, uh, and then we've mentioned a couple of new near-term activities. Um, and Gretchen's already mentioned the concept of developing clean energy financing options. And that's something that J-COS is gonna be talking about, um, over the coming months and wants to talk to, how, how to, uh, basically how to pull together community groups and partner with the CBJ to look at options that could improve financing for energy efficiency and electrification efforts. Um, action eleven, we suggest updating the Juno climate targets, um, to meet, or match the national goals of a fifty percent reduction in greenhouse gas pollution by two thousand and thirty. And that's a reduction over the two thousand and seven numbers. That's kind of been the standard that the US has used. And then, uh, a couple more transportation-related near-term actions. Suggest thinking about adopting a zero-emission municipal fleet policy, moving to transition by two thousand and thirty for all, all, uh, CBJ vehicles that can be electrified. Um, looking at school bus electrification and looking at collaboration with other businesses, nonprofits involved that, that, that could be converting to, to EV fleets. Um, again, yeah, thank you. Uh, and then, uh, and the reason I focused on fleets in these examples is that it's really hard to do, that it's hard for the CBJ or local groups to do much in terms of, uh, accelerating electric vehicle adoption. Again, because they're so expensive, we can support the, you know, the EV charging network, which is critical, but there isn't that much that can be done, um, short of offering subsidies and so forth, um, which the federal government is, is doing quite a bit of. But, but, but there are a number of things that could be done to support fleet adoption. Um, encouraging taxis, rental vehicle fleets to convert and, and, and also local government and state and federal government agencies could be doing that. And could be doing more by kind of putting, putting your heads together and collaborating between these different entities. And then finally, um, a couple, three items related to buildings. The CBJ should have a specific standard for new municipally-owned buildings that somewhere in the zero-carbon uh, area, there's a lot of this, different ways that could go about that. But, um, a new city hall could be a big chunk of reduction in, uh, energy use and greenhouse gas emissions. So, uh, that could be a piece of that puzzle as well as the, all the other puzzles and reasons to wrestle with it. And then finally, two recommendations that further down the road, haven't really thought through exactly what these should look like. But basically, looking at building and energy codes. Our codes are, our building codes are out of date. We don't have a commercial building energy code. So you see buildings go up like Home Depot and others that release huge amounts of heat, um, uh, through their, uh, flimsy, uninsulated walls.
Uh, stand by, we have a question on this slide.
Sorry.
Actually, I, I.
Looking at action seventeen, wondering what a voluntary stretch code is.
It's, uh, the idea, instead of adopting a really stringent code that's required, you basically give, you, you, you help people understand how they could benefit by adopting voluntary measures. And so this, it's a fairly common way to start moving people towards a modern code that addresses energy efficiency and electrification. So it's a, so it's called a stretch code, and it's. So it's a, so it's called a stretch code and it's basically information they provide to builders and and help educate them. So so that's, that's a suggestion for how to ease into the idea of upgrading, updating the codes. So any other questions before I turn it back to Gretchen?
Ms. Hale.
Thank you. This is actually a question for Mr. Manager and it's back on action three, which is support community transit and consider subsidized fares. And I know we've had now becoming longstanding challenge in hiring drivers for capital transit. And is it still the case that the express bus is not running? And do we have ideas? Because that's a great way to save money, but that parking lot out there is empty because the express bus is not running. So this is kind of a question for Mr. Manager. Is there anything that the assembly can do to try to move that forward?
Mr. Watt, and I'd also ask the North Douglas bus also isn't still still isn't running.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we'll, we'll look for Director Kester to give us an update on capital transit staffing. I assume at least partly the answer is we've been trying on the hard to fill positions. And and hopefully some of the incentives that we put in the budget are going to help us be able to hire. So maybe Director Kester can give us a staffing update where we are today.
Ms. Kester.
Thank you. So the staffing remains very difficult. We've had a number of retirements. It's retirement season, so we have not been able to expand service. The University Connector and the Riverside Airport Connector and the North Douglas are the three routes that have been suspended. Other routes, including the Downtown Valley Express service, has just been reduced, not eliminated.
Good, Ms. Hale. Ms. Tree.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I appreciate these lists of actions as kind of a to do list. I have a question about maybe some things that are a little less concrete, but wondering if J-COS has thought about them or has advice. A lot of the things that we can do in Juneau are to electrify things since we have renewable energy. So should the assembly or CBJ be thinking about our electric utilities capacity in the future of that capacity? And I have a second question. When the slide with the heat pump repairman popped up, I thought, okay, where can I get that guy? Because it's very hard to find. So are there any workforce development activities that we should be thinking about or investing in?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I wasn't sure who had that.
The question about electric capacity is going to be a long term question mark. You're already in it, given the decisions about or actions or movement towards dock electrification. I guess the I guess J-COS isn't in any particularly better situation than anybody else, except we do keep raising the question periodically. Yeah, it's going to be, I guess. I guess my take is that if we want to accomplish these things, in the long run, there has to be more electrical power for the community. And hopefully that comes from more hydropower. And but the, but the trick there is, of course, as you guys well know, it's sort of this chicken and egg. So you, in order to do the stuff, you got to have the power. But in order to do the, to get the power, you got to say you're going to do stuff. So there's customers and there's a economic basis for building new, new supplies. So in that sense, I think that it is important to try and figure out how to do those things together, you know, to do. And on the, and on the heat pump question, Alaska Heat Smart is definitely in the middle of working on the, on the workforce side of things and has pulled J-COS in a little bit. I mean, J-COS has got a little bit of an app, but but Heat Smart is paying a lot more attention to it. It is a case that I may have said this to you at an earlier session. We really have, it's been interesting to see how the workforce, the heat pump installer base has been increasing kind of incrementally as the demand for heat pumps has increased. And there are, it's sometimes they're telling us three or four months out that people are, but they are figuring out how to get heat pumps done.
I guess I would, through the chair, I would offer a couple other comments. If you, if you talk to ALNP, they would say the, the cheapest new sources, new supply is through energy efficiency. So to the extent we can move particularly the, a lot of the rental or condominium housing off that electric heat and onto heat pumps, much more efficient, you free up a lot of kilowatt hours there. The city, I, you know, I don't go in the weeds here, but the facility folks for the city identified with some of the LED lighting conversions on city facilities, they've saved, you know, tens of thousands of kilowatt hours. So there is, there is that way. I mean, that's, that's the cheapest way to deal with the supply. And another comment I recall from, from ALNP is that on a season, over an annual basis, in terms of being able to provide power, the, the transportation, the EV conversions is, is easier to, for them to accommodate. It's, it's sort of incremental and it, you know, people drive their cars year round. Whereas heating, there tends to be more of that winter spike. So there's a lot of considerations going on there. Any other questions?
Ms. Tree, you're good. Anybody else's questions? Nope.
Okay, just in conclusion, if I can actually get, oh, I got it. It's, I guess we have three points here. It's important to measure Juneau's project. And as Steve has mentioned, we could figure out some of the uncertainties, overcome the COVID effects if we could pick up 2022 as a more normal year, certainly in transportation. So we would encourage repeating the energy greenhouse gas analysis. And I guess one takeaway that that I would offer is in terms of new efforts, a priority would be focus on clean energy financing and determine what the city's role is in financing. So Juneau can capture this federal money and make significant process, progress on buildings, transportation, and the city's own officials, facilities. I get it that the city does not want to be in the banking business. There are people in the community collaborating with others who could actually do the financing work. The city, if you look at these federal funding programs, the city is likely a preferred applicant for some of these grants, certainly a key partner. And, and then as a final point there is look at some of the city's mechanisms it has that might underscore or support loan repayments and whether LID is a possibility. I mean, that you generally is focused on utilities while heating in a condominium property is a utility function. Granted, there's no public purpose and that association would have to, in owners would have to repay. But there's possibilities there. And as a final comment, celebrate. I mean, the assembly has done great work. The, the city staff has done work. Thank you very much for the, the attention to climate action for Juneau. Juneau's in a lot better place than a lot of, of the thousands of municipalities in this country. As Steve has mentioned, continue doing what's working, support others. J-COS is definitely willing to do some background legwork and to help in that regard, public education. And lead by example. I mean, there's, there's success stories on the city's own facilities. And that may be particularly valuable for commercial property owners of bigger buildings, you know, any of the retrofit and celebrate your success. Let the public know. We're, we're doing a good job. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you to J-COS for all the work you do and for this presentation with this good info. Final questions? Anybody? Ms. Hale.
Thank you so much. And, and Ms. Kaiser and Mr. Branky, Juneau is in the position it's in as well due to incredible work by organizations like J-COS and all of the other Heat Smart, et cetera, all of the dedicated citizens that we have that are so keen on, on, on addressing climate change. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I have a question. The vague, the find, find ways to finance clean energy. I don't want to go into big detail. Just name the things. One thing is on bill financing. There was other things whose names and acronyms I cannot remember. Just tell me what they are.
Well, CPACE, commercial.
CPACE, that was it. What's that? What is that called?
CPACE, Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy.
Right. It, it's a way for monies to be fronted to say a commercial property owner. And this could be, in fact, federal monies that are coming in as zero interest loans in the, it's money fronted to a commercial property owner. And they repay through their energy savings over a term. The state has, has allowed this under statute, and I think they extended the term to 20 years. So owner repays the loan. It, the mechanism is their, their annual property assessment. So the C would collect it and then pass it to whatever local entity was actually doing, doing the financing work. So the city's not doing the banking. They're just, it's a pass through. It's a mechanism through your property tax assessment.
So the thing, on bill financing, CPACE, those are things that you are, we're not finding those. Are you, as J-COS, analyzing those things, saying this one's good or don't do that? Or we don't have that capacity as an assembly?
There've been, there've been a couple of white papers circulated, J-COS, Alaska Heat Smart, some other organizations have talked about those the last couple of years. There are some others as well coming out of the, coming out of the federal legislation, Green Bank, other, which are sort of more sources of financing rather than the local mechanisms, but, but they open up some new, some new options. So, so I would say there've been a number of people and groups that have dabbled around and looking at those possibilities. But J-COS is talking about pulling together some kind of effort to, through our sustainability sessions or something to have some discussions about that. The other thing that is that we have examples of working together with local credit unions and so forth. So there's, I mean, there's a dumb number of different possibilities like that. And, and the CBJ, there's a lot of different potential roles. I mean, one could just be, you know, kind of moral support and, and encouragement. It could, there are, there are the things that the CBJ probably could do to help facilitate that. And some of those would depend on the CBJ taking action like on bill financing, unless it could persuade the electric utility to do it.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so there's a number of possibilities that we would like to talk about.
Okay, great. Ms. Hale's question.
Thank you. And it's actually kind of a comment that follows on your question, which is, I've also really thought about using the Affordable Housing Fund to fund heat pump installation. And also, you know, when I see a great big condo development going in with a fuel tank next to every single condo, I feel like at the city level, we're doing something wrong. And maybe you do, we need to think about incentivists, for example, incentivizing heat pump installation when people build new, new condos or new, new places. So I think there could be things along those lines.
Yeah, I may just add a comment and I'll probably irritate my friends at ALNP. But if you look nationally at the concept of on bill financing, I think in many places, it's, it's a way to re recoup an upfront investment, but it's, it's tied to an electric bill because it's electricity and electricity. It's not a city wastewater.
Yep.
Utility bill.
We'll have to save the, all of that for another time. Anybody? Okay, all right. Thank you again for everything and we're going to take a 10 minute break.
Okay, how do I turn that off?
Oh. Oh. To do the whole meeting back to order, we have one more agenda item. And that would be short term rental information. Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. You have a memo in your packet from me on this topic. This memo is really in here to, for us to hear, hear your thoughts and perhaps get some direction on next steps on short term rentals. It attempts to summarize the conversation, some of the conversations that you've had around short term rentals over the past year at a handful of meetings. We are in this place where we could bring you a package, a slate of regulations in the near term, near term or, or long term future. And so our hope tonight is to get a sense about what you want. And this memo strives to get you into a place maybe to make that decision. I think at a, at a high level, I'm thinking about whether it makes sense to, to regulate now or later and, and kind of pro conning that out. The, the pros to waiting, I think, would be that we will have more and better data after a registration program has been live for a while, assuming that you passed that. So that is on your agenda for next Monday night. If you pass it next Monday night, it'll take 30 days to go into effect. And then we would start, start collecting data and have a decent amount, enough of that to give you a decent analysis probably within eight to 12 months would be, would be my guess. Another, another thing in the pro column to wait would be that the state might do something on the short term rental regulatory front. We certainly don't know if the state will or not, but there was legislation that was introduced this session that would. There's, there was legislation that was introduced this session that would create a registration program that would not be free. It would have a cost associated with it. Ours, ours will be free as currently proposed. And that would limit individuals to operating one short term rental unit per individual in its current form, right? It was introduced late in the session. We think it will probably come up again next session. Those details would, of course, all be up for amendment and editing in, in committees. So, so no real, no real predictions. So, so no real, no real predictions there. The cons to waiting, I think, kind of the big one is that the, to the extent that you believe there's a problem, or that short-term rentals present a problem to the housing market right now, that, that problem only exacerbates. We're only seeing growth among short-term rentals right now. And I think, you know, with that growth, as more, as more people get into that particular market and business, regulation becomes more painful for more people, the longer you wait to do it. And then if the state doesn't move forward and you base your, your thinking now upon that likely happening, then, then you're, you're just doing the same thing later that you, that you could have done now, right? I think that's kind of how I think about the pros and cons. So, so with that, happy to, happy to go into more, more detail. On the last page of the memo, I've given you some of the sorts of regulatory options that are currently in place right now. I gave you an example of, of one, one city inside of Alaska and one city outside of Alaska, and a couple bullets on some other things that we see. But really, really, tonight, we're, we're just looking for that sense of the body of, do you, do you want a slate of options sooner or later? And if you have thoughts on what those options should be, that would, of course, be great, too.
Okay, who has questions? Mr. Smith and then Mr. Bryson and then Ms. Trem.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Not a question at this time. I just need to disclose that on a seasonal basis, I have and am renting my primary residence as a short-term rental. I've spoken with the city attorney, and just due to the broad nature of the issue, I do not believe I have to recuse myself from voting. Thank you.
Okay, the hands I saw were Mr. Bryson, Ms. Trem, Ms. Wall. Mr. Bryson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Before I ask my question, I would like to state that I have property that we have considered turning into short-term rentals. I do not currently have any short-term rentals, but I may in the future, just to get that out of the way. I think my question is growth. We were concerned that the Ironman event of last year that created the large amount of growth of short-term rentals, now that the Ironman event is not taking place this year and next, have we seen a change in the growth or a change in the? It'd be hard to predict what the bumps would be. I know that we had a bump during the Ironman. I guess that's my question. Is this, do we see it? Does it have the same trajectory? Or has growth slowed down a little bit now that we don't have that large summertime event?
Mr. Barr, what do we know about the data?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We, the, the most recent data we have on growth indicates that we're seeing, potentially, the data is kind of squishy and it's dynamic, and it, it's, it's complicated. It's complicated to glean this really well out of the data without registration numbers in place on the advertisements. Because advertisements go active and inactive, and there's the issue of duplicates and weeding out duplicates. But our best guess is that we're seeing a growth rate of eight to 12 short-term rental units per month.
Mr. Bryson, go ahead.
Thank you. My second question is, could we have a short-term rental registration without any rules to it, that the only rule would be that you have to register your short-term rental? Is that an option of something that we could do immediately? Okay, fine. We're not making any rules, but you have to register your short-term rental to have it legal in Juno. Is that a possibility? Thank you for the time.
Yes, Mr. Bryson, that's what we might do at the next assembly meeting. Remember, that's what, that's what, it was introduced, and we're going to vote on it next time. It's hard to remember all the stuff we do. Ms. Trem?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I also forgot about that. If I hadn't seen Mr. Barr this weekend, I would have had the same question. So I'm all for doing this, putting something in place or getting started on it now rather than waiting for data. If that bill gets reintroduced next year, I would like us to lobby very hard against it just because it was going to be one bill for the whole state, and we should get to make our own rules. Oh, what else? I should have written down what I meant to say. Sorry. I, I think I like the idea of, of using regulation more than like zoning rules as a framework for our regulating short-term rentals, putting something in code rather than like the land use code and having CDD have to administer it. I don't like the idea of a cap. I see that Wasilla has a cap. Maybe that's an annual number. I'm not sure. But I think if we were to put a cap on the number of short-term rentals, we'd just really increase the value of everybody who was able to get in before we did that. And I don't think that's fair. So those are my thoughts as we move forward.
Hey, we have my list. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I, too, don't want to wait, recognizing that there may be questions that will arise that we'll have to take our time to get answered. But my, my question really is about process, and if you've thought through kind of the process for making these decisions, only because, you know, I found that when we, there are some decisions that are really set up well for us to vote as nine members, yes or no. And then there are some things I'm thinking of, like when we exempt, tried to exempt food from sales tax that are so complex that they don't necessarily lend themselves well to nine people getting into all the weeds and then trying to vote on something that they all actually agree on. And so just, and that was designed with the best intent to make that happen, and it still didn't work. And so I'm just thinking that a process that lets the community kind of holistically think about what we need to achieve our goals may be better than the Assembly looking through a list of ideas and then choosing ones they like. So I don't know if you all have thought through ideas.
Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was having, I was having a conversation with Mr. Watt about this a couple days ago. And it kind of went along the lines of, you know, if this is a regulation for most of our regulations, we work through regulations at the staff level and then have a, have a public comment period for those regulations. And then that package of regulations, as well as all the public comment, comes to the Assembly. And the Assembly's role, most of the time for regulations, is, is to simply vote those upward to send them back, right, to staff for more work, rather than to wordsmith them line by line, item by item in, in public meetings. You know, as, as we were talking about that, we, we, as, as, as we were talking about that, you know, it was, it was tough to think of that process working well for this particular item just because it is one that I think is probably going to get more attention, deservedly so, from the community and, and the Assembly that I think is going to want to have more input, item by item, line by line, on, on this one than, say, for example, commercial passenger vehicles or some of our other sort of run-of-the-mill regulations that, that we, that we deal with on a, on a pretty regular basis. That, that also, to be fair, I, I think many of those had, were originated through a more, more thorough process than the regulatory process. So all of that said, it's probably not a great answer to your question, but we, we, we do still need to give some more thought to kind of the community and public input part of this.
I could summarize that answer. Ms. Hughes-Kanis, we'll just have to model through, was the, I think?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, it sounds like we, there's probably some consensus that doing something sooner would be better, or at least that's my preference, that it would bring us back a regulatory, a slate of regulatory options that we could talk more about. And I appreciate Ms. Wall's questions. That's a really good one. So maybe we should all noodle on that. For myself personally, I think this is going to be something that probably we are all going to want to weigh in on, and there may not be as much consensus around what exactly that looks like, which will be an interesting process. For instance, I am interested in a limited number, some looking at things like caps. I'd be interested to see what that might look like for Juno. I'd be interested to see what, something like limiting it to your primary residence, limitations on the number that an individual could operate, if even if we didn't have a borough-wide cap that any individual couldn't operate, say, more than one or two, or whatever that magic number is. And I'd also be interested in what staff's best guess would be on something like a permit fee. You know, would that be annual? Would that be like an impact fee that went into the Affordable Housing Fund? Would it be a larger fee and then it's one time, or is it a small one and it's annual? Would it roll over if you sold the property? Would that come with the person who's purchasing it? So those are all things that I'm interested in staff maybe bringing some more information about or thinking about what that might look like for Juno and making some suggestions.
Okay, I have a Madam Mayor and then Ms. Hale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to see us look at regulations, too, but we have to be careful about not getting too specific or too finite, finite, without, out all the information that we have. So the two things that I'd be interested in, because I think they directly affect our housing, is limit on the number of short-term rentals by an individual or business. And I like this one in Placer County with only one dwelling unit of a multifamily building may be permitted as a short-term rental. However, it would be interesting to see how that affects the summer business operations that have had to buy buildings so they could have housing for their workers. So we don't make their workers get displaced also. So it's going to be a tricky one.
Ms. Hale?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And Ms. Wall, I really appreciate your suggestion. And I, I just wonder if, if, because we all know our tendency to noodle on line by line and then take five-four vote and five-four vote and five-four vote and exhaust ourselves, we know that we will do that. I wonder if there might be some way of a roundtable public work session, something like that, where we actually start to, we have ideas coming at us from staff, and we were talking about quite a few of the ideas, and there's a lot of them in this memo. But we actually start to winnow through those in, in a public context. And Ms. Wall might have some sorts of ideas about this as well, so that we don't do that thing that we have done now several times on different, different things that have come before us. I also really appreciate staff's attention in the memo to our transient workforce, Ms. Madam Mayor's discussion about summer workforce. We have nurses that come through that don't need a place for a long time, and we actually do need to provide places for them. So, and, and I'm very interested in locally owned, but I don't know quite how that would be enforced. So those are my thoughts.
More thoughts, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I was also, well, maybe I'll, maybe I will just ask a couple of questions. I, I guess I had seen somewhere that you can limit, or, you know, that, I think, was it Wasilla that said, oh, they're limited to Alaska residents. Is that, is that, that's, you can legally do that? Okay, just, okay, I guess, okay. I, I guess I'm also kind of just curious of other, like, legal considerations. I mean, I know, I mean, I think, did New York City just get sued for their registration program, I believe, by Airbnb? Anyway, I'm just, just curious about, you know, legal considerations that we need to keep in mind.
Ms. Lane?
Or?
Madam Chair, there's always going to be a, a lot of legal considerations, and a lot of those are, you know, our, our department has looked into them a lot. Ms. Wright has done a lot of work on this with Mr. Barr. And it's hard to research everything, so we're kind of waiting on what that direction is from the Assembly. What we did find, though, is that it's, it appears that it's legal to limit it to state residents only. We don't think you should go as far as to limit it to, to city and borough of Juno residents. That may be pushing it a little bit. So once we figure out where the Assembly really wants to go, we can then research in detail, look at a lot of the case laws, like you mentioned, the New York case and other challenges to these types of statutes and codes.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Another question is just, thank you. And I, I guess it's probably just depends, but I'm, I'm sure some communities have grandfathered in certain units or a cap or something, and then others just haven't. And then probably answer my questions here. And then I guess the other thing would be, I mean, places that haven't grandfathered a name, do they, I mean, do they provide any relief or anything? Or is it kind of just been like, the world has changed, and now they just have to kind of deal with it, I guess?
Mr. Barr?
Talk on those concepts.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A common, a common method that I've found in looking at other communities and how they do this is they'll have an annual permit. And that annual permit can be orchestrated in lots of different ways. It can be, if there's a, if there's a cap, it can be a first-come, first-serve sort of thing. I've seen tiered structures where communities would have an annual cap, but that they would incentivize the types of short-term rentals that they found to be more appealing for a public purpose reasons first, right? So they, they might do things like, say that if, you know, if you're operating one short-term rental, you, you can apply for this annual permit during the first two weeks that it's open. And if you want to do two to five short-term rentals, you can apply during the next two weeks and kind of feather it out that way. I've seen that. I've also seen communities that grandfather all existing short-term rentals and then place caps on new. That's, that's something that, that folks have done. So there, there's lots of different ways to, to think through that.
I have Ms. Hughes-Kanis and then Ms. Trem.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, two questions. One was inspired by Ms. Lane's response to Mr. Smith. Am I correct in reading the memo that the city of Wasilla is limiting it to a city of Wasilla address? So someone is doing that, but you wouldn't recommend that we do that. Is that correct? Just because it says local address?
It says must have a local address in the memo, yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. It appears that's what they're doing. They also, I believe, that they have a business license, as many of these, various cities have business licenses or we don't, and we haven't found where there's the connection between that. But our advice so far would be to limit it for a state address rather than a city and borough address at this point, until we can figure out whether that's legal or not.
Mr. Watt has a comment?
Deputy Mayor, maybe this is a way to think about this. So we're, you know, generally new territory, people crafting regulations, laws around this topic. And we're probably never going to have a legally bomb-proof solution. But I think the best thing you can do is start from the standpoint of what's the public purpose and what's the best way to achieve that public purpose with a really tight nexus between that. So like on this kind of thing, it's really easy to go to like the solution and then work it back. But, you know, here, I would say, you know, the public purpose is going to be something like limiting the effect on our housing market so that we can maintain a year-round war workforce. And then we probably have second-order issues about effects on neighborhoods and commercialization neighborhoods. And if we, I think, working it through that way in this kind of new legal arena will be better situated to come up with solutions that will survive court challenge.
Ms. Trem and then Mr. Smith?
Just a quick follow-up on that. So that was super helpful. Thank you, Mr. Watt. My other question was for Mr. Barr. Have you seen anyone do a lottery system?
Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't think so. I don't think so. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to remember. The topic of a lottery system has come up and I, and I'm trying to remember if it was just an idea that someone had or something that I read, and I think it was just an idea.
Thanks. Me or Ms. Trimm?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Maybe the lottery system was for cat licenses. For cat licenses.
Ms. Trimm, could you say that? I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to have distracted us. We're talking about this like purely in, about short-term rentals impacts on housing. I know a lot of communities in the country also have regulations that address community impacts of, you know, poorly behaved guests. Do you know either through like CDD or JPD, is that, do we know if that is also an issue here in Juno or not so much?
Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If, if that is an issue, it hasn't, it hasn't risen to my desk. So I haven't, I haven't, I haven't received much feedback on that, on that front, any.
And I'll just comment on that. When I was on the planning commission, we had hours of controversy about bed and breakfasts. So that was a thing and it doesn't seem to be a thing anymore. But people had a big opinions on whether there should be a better breakfast in their neighborhood and how many cars it would be and et cetera. So this is different, but it's, you know, similar. Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to correct myself. I am aware of one, one, one complaint about a bed and breakfast has risen to me during this conversation.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I, I appreciate the idea of the, you know, what is the, what is the problem we're trying to solve? And I think we're, I feel like at least most of us are probably on the, you know, or allow, creating more housing availability just because we know the, the crisis that that is. I guess, you know, one thing I've thought about, I, I guess maybe just briefly on the whole, like, how do we, how do we protect, knowing that we do have short-term traveling nurses, for instance, that work like, what, 13 week? You know, whatever rotations or contracts or something, how do we protect something like that and not, and not get them caught up? I mean, is that in the way that we would define the short-term rental and the length of a short-term rental? Okay.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good, good point. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I had a couple of conversations with folks about this that, that employ seasonal workers. And we think the way to address that would be and how a short-term rental is defined. Most communities define a short-term rental as anything of less than 30 days. There are communities that go further than that and, and define a short-term rental as anything less than six months. And I think the public purpose reason that they would have for that is, is just to push that needle that much further on protecting your housing stock for long-term permanent year-round workers. But by going the other direction, again, it would kind of push that public purpose needle towards still protecting your housing stock for more permanent workers. But by going at, by implementing a less than 30-day standard, you could go three weeks, as an example. You, you would be signaling that you are also prioritizing that sort of medium-term rental of that seasonal workforce. So, you know, you can, you can think of the different examples, right? Traveling nurses are a good one. Seafood processes are, seafood processors or another legislative staffers and aides and legislators themselves are another. And the different kind of scenarios where they come to Juno and how long they stay.
Okay, Ms. Hale.
Thank you. And thank you for that question, Mr. Smith. So is there a, a different way of addressing seasonal workforce? For example, having some sort of employer verification form that would be filled out so that that 30-day, if we made it 30 days, but there was some way of addressing someone staying shorter, but, but having some verification method? Maybe we could explore that. We're, yeah, we're super getting into the weeds now. Mr. Barr.
Thank you.
No, I mean, just we're, we're already doing it. We're, we're not up here with the purpose. We're doing the super micro already.
The, the, the best.
I don't mean you. I mean, just all of us, all do it. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The, the best way that, that I've seen that addressed is through the definition of what a short-term rental is. When looking at other options, and there might be other options that, that we haven't explored yet that, that we'll dive into as we, as we start to explore this, this slate. The other, the other options that I've come across with haven't really passed legal muster and being able to provide equal and fair treatment to all. So it gets tricky.
So what I've heard so far is most, or there's at least five people who want to do something sooner rather than later. We don't know what it is exactly, but we'd like you to help us figure out it. And several people have said the owners must be Alaskans, maybe limiting it to one per person or your house, maybe some disagreement on a cap or not a cap or whether those other things would help, would do the thing without having to say 43 or whatever. Am I characterizing so far accurately? More things to say, Ms. Trimm?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just really quickly, we have already defined short-term rental as something less than 30 days in our property tax abatement and probably whatever's coming to us on Monday. So if we are going to change that, we got to remember that.
Right. More, Mr. Smith.
Thanks. And, and maybe you're helping us kind of float up out of the weeds a little bit, I guess. I'll probably bring us right back down there, but. No. I, I guess, you know, one thing, one thing I know sometimes is discussed is like, oh, does the owner live on site? And I've kind of kicked that around and I can understand and I can also understand, I think, as reading through, I think either your memo or some other stuff that like bed and breakfast, that was kind of a check on the guests. Like there's, you know, grannies upstairs or whatever, you know. I did have a thing, I was thinking though, a little bit about like the equity of that, like, you know, if someone, what? Oh. Just like, you know, is, is there an, is there an, and maybe, maybe we'll, I guess, what is, are you envisioning throwing just a ton of stuff out on this slate? Or are you envisioning like, being like, here's the five things we recommend you doing? I, I guess, and that's going to help me a little bit with, you know, how deep in the weeds I get.
Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One of the early things that I'll, I'll be sitting down with staff from CDD Finance on is trying to think through whatever we propose, its, its impact on staff and our ability to both have a program and enforce a program. It will certainly be my desire to present something that is, is relatively simple and straightforward. Because I think that once our registration program is active and that we have a year or so worth, worth of data on it. You know, almost every community that I, that I looked at, it's, this is not a one and done thing, right? You're, you're going to want to look at this again as the situation evolves, as the housing market changes, hopefully improves as we get more data, as you get community requests and public input. So, so my, my goal would be to give you a relatively limited slate to start. Something that's relatively simple, something that's easy for staff to implement and enforce. That also moves the public purpose needle in the direction that I think you want to move it and then plan on revisiting that in a year or so.
So the other thing to agree on at a high level is why are we doing this? And I think that housing market issue is the issue, right? Everybody's nodding. So that would be helpful to agree on to make, to then check to see if the thing we're doing is the minimal thing we can do to keep that, the housing market. So to minimize the effect of short-term rentals on the ability of Juno people to find a place to live. Is that? Ms. Hughes-Canes and then Ms. Hale.
I appreciate your summarizing and getting us out of here. And I think that is spot on and I really appreciate Mr. Watt saying it's easy to go backwards, but really think about why we're doing this. So I agree with you. I do think when we get into making the soup, probably people will say, yeah, this does affect that. And someone else will say, no, that doesn't. You're just trying to punish somebody. And so that's all. When we get there.
Fair enough. We'll have that.
But I, but let's try not to.
That's. Ms. Hale.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And I think also I appreciate Mr. Barr saying, I agree with you that that's what we're, what we're trying to do. But I also appreciate Mr. Barr saying, you know, let's watch this over time. And what changes do we need, need to make over time? Because I think it's important that we not forget the benefits, that we don't let the benefits of short-term rentals slide. A lot of people over many, many years have talked up independent tourism and have talked up wanting people to come here and stay for weeks rather than just come here one day on a cruise ship. And we have the potential with remote work, for example, with people actually spending significant time in our community, doing things like short-term rental and, and actually benefiting our economy. So as we move beyond the housing crisis, this might be something that we want to encourage. So I like the idea of revisiting it and having a, a clear goal in mind as well.
So I appreciated the memo sentence that said, many communities are on their third or fourth or fifth round of doing something. So it's a good, Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I agree that we are going down a correct path. We need to register short-term rentals. We need to make sure that they're not literally displacing our residents. But I would like to remind everybody that we are about to begin on a process of telling what people, what they can do with their property. And that is a big deal. So while we want to get all this information, we want to see what's the right way to go about it. While we want a correct solution that leads to the outcome that most benefits our community, we still have to keep in mind that we are now trying to figure out what to tell people that they can do with their property that they own. That's always a very slippery slope. So we do have to keep that into consideration. Thank you for allowing me that time.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson, for saying that. Very much appreciate that and agree with you. Mr. Smith, you had a.
Yeah, just a brief comment. I'm sorry. I, I guess I, I appreciate what Ms. Hale mentioned in that I think, you know, short-term rentals do provide a chance for everyday people to benefit economically. You know, some people have said like, okay, so we cancel short-term rentals and then it's just big businesses that build hotels and they're, why do they get a profit? You know, like what about someone who works at the mine a week on, week off? Or, you know, someone who's on the ferry two weeks on, two weeks off? I mean, for me, it has allowed me to generate rent income significantly higher than I could if I just rented my place. And, you know, and I, I just stay with my partner kind of thing. Obviously, that would be problematic if everyone did that during summer or whatever. I mean, there are clearly impacts. And then I guess just, so, you know, I kind of, I, I do see benefits to that. I see, you know, snowbird types, like allowing them to rent their spot. I had something that Mr. Bryson just mentioned. Oh, I guess one thing that I'm, and I think we're, we've gotten there probably. And that's, you know, if someone's business model is buy a house or buy residential property and then use it for short-term rental. I mean, to me, I'm, I'm probably at least where we are now, like generally opposed to that as a business as a way for people to, you know, generate money. It's like, that's, to me, that's, you know, doing it as an investment and buying a, you know, usable housing property. Anyway, that seems problematic to where we are right now, but I think we're probably already there, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I think we're, Mr. Barr, you have the general sense of the assembly. It is not in your head and you're going to work on it. Madam Mayor has something else to say about some other topic.
Perfect. First of all, it's good to see all nine of us here through vacations and sicknesses and everything. It's just nice to see all the faces, but mainly I want to take a moment to congratulate Mr. Barr on making the governor's task force on childcare.
More communities can benefit from your knowledge. And Ms. Trimm has a comment.
Okay, at the end of, okay, just, we have a finance committee meeting Wednesday at six. It's Mr. Rogers's last finance committee meeting. Feel free to wear one dangly earring and or dress in drag, which I think Mr. Barr is going to. So we will be celebrating Mr. Rogers on Wednesday.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Trimm. Further to talk about tonight, we have talked about something else that says someone's pointing out. Do we need the quick reference, something?
Madam Chair, this is included in your packet mainly so you guys know how much time is left to bring ordinances forward to put something on the ballot, just in information.
Thank you very much for doing that. All right, we're adjourned.